Board of Selectmen meeting for Tuesday, May 28th, 2024 at 6:01 PM. Stand for the pledge. Pledge of allegiance.
The high United States of America and to the Republic which is kings, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. You have a motion to approve warrant WR 24-24.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. You have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular Board of Selectmen meeting on, oops, January 22nd, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, anybody here for public session? No. Congratulations, Mike.
Thank you.
Stuff is.
Welcome aboard.
See, this is your last year. Be chairman.
You nominate me?
I'll nominate you.
Well, why don't I do the nomination and then I'll give Dawn the option of vice chair or I don't know what. You've been chair for two years, so what do you want to do?
Quit. It's it's up to her. She wants to be chair for her last year. That's fine. I'll be vice.
Okay, that was all I was asking. Were you, what position you wanted?
That doesn't matter.
Is that all?
Yeah.
New person usually is clerk.
Yes, I know. I'm giving Don the option to do what he wants. I move that we appoint Lucy Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, Don Hapkosky as Vice Chairman, and myself as clerk.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Continuing on the agenda, first item is a seasonal bid opening will be held this year, June 27th. If we all three can be there for that, 2024, 10 AM, and it will be at the safety complex. And we will meet with all the representatives from those who wish to make a bid for anything that the highway has put out for bid.
And I just want to add that on top of what the highway does, we are piggybacking like we did last year on the fuel.
Okay, that's good.
And propane.
And that's for all departments, the fuel.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'll set on that date. Okay, very good. We have been notified by our auditors. They were, they have been here last week and they said that, once again, the ambulance receivables are still on their books and they would like to see that they be taken off, that we can vote them off this time, and they would like to see us do that, and that's for a total amount of $80,000. That is for payments that were never made and probably are not collectible now because it's over a period of many years prior to our present fire chief. This is insurance companies that either copays were denied or that were not covered. And they just kept building up and it was higher at one time, but it's down to 80,000 and they'd like to see that taken off the books. We'll need to take a vote on that. They said that no vote had been taken previously, even though we had discussed it several times. But if someone would like to make the vote.
So this is prior to
This is.
Becoming part of Rutland EMS.
Yeah.
Yes.
One of the towns books.
Yeah.
Okay, that's right.
Yep, yeah, it was 125.
Yeah.
They were able to collect.
Yeah.
Eighty, they can't collect.
So a lot of these are the 20% copays where people just can't.
Can't.
Yep. Okay.
Can't, didn't, or the insurance company did not submit.
Right.
Some medic aid payments that don't do the point amount.
Right.
That's in there too.
Yeah.
Yeah, they have contract amounts for, yeah.
Do I hear a vote?
I'll make a motion.
A motion?
Write off the 80,000 ambulance receivables.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The next on the list on the agenda, intermunicipal agreement with Rutland Human Resources Services to be paid for by ARPA funding, possible vote for tonight, discussion.
No, the, I mean, the only thing that I received was an email that was forwarded from Rutland just with the dollar amount of 9,195? Or 1,9,100?
Ninety-five.
$95, which would cover up to five hours a week. That's all it said.
What's the duration of the proposed?
In the email, it didn't state, I think I had asked former selectman, and I believe he had said for a year. But that was a verbal communication.
Do we have a written contract?
I don't have any.
Nothing written at all that substantiates any of that?
I have not received that, no.
I don't think we should do anything to.
I don't think we can do anything with it.
I don't know how you can if you don't have.
There's nothing in writing.
I know, you know, I'll look at my emails again, but I definitely am certain I did not receive anything. I can, I know that Aaron had taken the lead on on this a lot, so maybe there was something, but I'm not sure. I can't say one way or another.
Well, we don't have an agreement, so we need that first, so we can read it over and figure it out.
Exactly.
Would you like me to reach out to Austin?
Yeah, I was gonna say, why don't you reach town administrator over there and see if we can get something in writing.
Okay, we definitely would need something in writing. We'd need some kind of an agreement or a contract.
Time period too.
Time period, yeah.
Yes.
Because if it goes multi-year beyond, you know, once the ARPA money's gone, you know, and you're still committed to a contract, that makes things difficult for finance committee.
Okay, we'll table it for now until we get further information from the town of Rutland and their H&R person. Okay, next on our list, zoning board of appeals appointment. Peter Clifford has come forward, has said that he would like to be appointed to the zoning board of appeals since there really truly are only two members. There should be three members to that board. I have nothing in writing that he wants to. He said he would sign the paperwork, but I haven't gotten to see him to do that, and he wasn't at the planning board meeting last meet, last week. But he did say he was interested, so we could vote still to have him appointed. He will be taking the place of the alternate to the board, to the zoning board.
I have no objections. I'll make a motion to appoint Peter Clifford to the zoning board of appeals.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
On the FY24 Community Compact Municipal Fiber Grant, officially, we have received notification that the town of Okam was granted $172,075 to complete the work that has been looked at. We have the contract. 1,000, 172,075 cents, $75, I'm sorry.
No sense.
No sense. And they are asking if we will accept it and sign the contracts.
This is the one hooks all the town buildings into high speed fiber?
Yep.
Okay.
If you don't mind me asking, to complete the target, usually they give a timeframe. That's usually a decent amount of time.
Oh, down here, December 31st, 2025.
Okay.
What infrastructure impacts does that have as far as how it's going to route, where it's going to go, how many trees have to be cut down?
Wasn't it starting at the police station?
Yes.
It's going to start up there.
Because fiber optics, I think, only comes to right here.
Direction.
Back in the mid 90s, they only went to the telephone building.
School just did an upgrade from here to the school.
Good.
They didn't cut any trees.
No, they would have gone up Barry Road from Colbrook.
I think that's what they were gonna follow.
Okay.
This project.
Now, the school, they did that on their own?
Yeah, that's totally different. They have a secure system and
Yeah.
And ours would be also secure.
Yeah.
So it'd be a library, this building, public safety building, and the PD.
Yeah.
The main components would be at the PD for security reasons. And would give us less connections than the other buildings. We had to pay a hundred bucks a month for.
Right. So if we do it, and depending on, and this is down the road, the decisions that may be made is to this building or a new building, that's going to be a rerouting of all that, depending on how that all plays out.
Depending on where the building goes, yeah.
Yeah, exactly. That's down the road.
It is understood and agreed that the grant provided under this agreement shall be used solely to pay for expenses associated with the project. Expenses related to project administration and management shall be assumed by the grantee, which includes without limitation salaries and wages of grantee staff, legal fees, travel, meal, and entertainment, entertainment, expenses, overhead, and supplies, project costs, including prior to the execution and subsequent termination of this agreement and costs of any other service or activity not related to the project. Detailed records must be kept and are open to be examined at any time by the EOAF. The grantee is responsible for any cost overruns that occur during the implementation of the project. And then the date is December 31st, 2025.
I think we ought to check to see that the municipal building, I think the power goes underground from the one pole there behind the old V plow there, you know, from the municipal building, and then I think it goes over to the police station, but I think we should check that out first because if they have to go underground with it.
They were here checking it out one day. Did they say, they didn't say anything about the underground at all?
No, not that I'm aware of. Again, the former select board member, you know, I know he went from location to location with one of the companies and.
Yeah, I remember that today, yeah. There are many other prices and fees that could be incurred at the same time for the town. Because this is the first time looking at it personally, I'd like to look at it a little more in detail.
Yeah, I think so. Because of all the ledge up there and everything, if, you know, we got power underground for the new building. I mean, granted, yeah, we can put poles up, you know, but, you know, the police station, you know, off of Barry Road.
Yeah.
But if it's all underground now, I don't think we want to dig stuff up between on the parking lot.
Yeah.
Because I know the water comes up, goes to the police station, then it goes over to underground. It's all underground.
We'll put this back on for the agenda for our next meeting and give us a little time to look through everything and check out all the conditions that they're offering us.
Yeah, original proposals, we should look at those. It details what they're gonna do.
Mm-hmm.
You know. I know it was around 80, 90,000 from one company, and we deliberately went higher in case we ran into issues.
No, and that's, well, that's a good thing.
You know. So, but I think we should actually see those documents before we.
I think so too.
Jump into this.
Yep.
Okay. Put that to one side for now, doing a little more research on it. Administrative assistant report.
I don't really have anything to report, but I would like for the board to consider, well, we have our website, our emails that need to be renewed. That entails also SharePoint. I did get a summary from IT with all the activity on SharePoint, which not many who have access have used it. So it's a matter of really going through it and keeping the ones that are using it and maybe tabling the other ones for now, saving some money, and then just cleaning up the emails. I don't have the list right now in regards to which ones we would get rid of or change, for example. With Mike, I know that I did, he had one set up for tree warden, which hadn't been up and running, so we just changed that to his name, so no new license fee occurred. So just kind of like if, if you guys are okay with me just cleaning it up, it'll be no additional funds, if anything, it would just be removing things that are not being used. I was hoping to have a list, but I just, there's only so many hours in the day. So, but we do need to have that done this week, so if the board is comfortable with me cleaning that up and then submitting it to CM Geeks, so I can, we can get that running.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No.
No, I got my book should be in for next week, so yeah, no, we're good.
Okay.
Anytime we put, keeping it a secret.
It'll be coming on time. For the board, any new business, old business, whichever you want to do first?
I don't, have we set a date for the new highway superintendent appointment for his negotiations or?
Haven't done that yet, but he would be starting the 4th, 5th, the deadline.
So we should do that before July 1st.
Yeah.
Have him come in and.
Do you want to add that to the next meeting?
I think so.
Are we meeting Tuesday after town meeting or the following Monday?
The following Monday, so you're meeting on June 10th? No, the meeting's June 3rd, so then that's an off Monday, so June 10th. Is this in a regular session?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Well, if it turns into a negotiation, would you go to executive session?
Well, we would have to post it as that.
Yeah, we'd have to post it as that.
Yes.
Can you distribute Kevin's current contract to us?
Yes. Definitely.
And actually, if you can get me the police chiefs and the fire chiefs, just so I can.
Fire chief does not have a contract, but police does.
Okay, just so I can
Yeah.
Read it, be up to speed on what is and isn't.
Library. The new.
She doesn't have a contract.
Okay, that's good.
So the 10th?
June 10th.
I guess along with that, we've advertised for the mechanic laborer. It's gonna replace Harold.
Yeah.
Have we had any?
No.
Fires?
No, not yet.
I think it just went in to the Barry Gazette this week.
Yeah, it was in the paper.
Yeah.
And I put it for a few weeks to run.
Yeah, yeah. All right.
Okay, and just to put it out there, it is a reminder that Pine Grove Cemetery will be closed all next week.
Starting the 3rd.
Starting the 3rd.
Through. Where's Matt?
10th, 11th. Following Monday, so I think it'll be open on that Tuesday.
They said six days.
Yeah.
So, like this.
Do they work Saturdays and Sundays?
I don't believe so.
I know Sunday's not, but Saturday, no.
I don't believe so.
Okay.
It'd be on an overtime thing and.
That was supposed to be in the Barry Gazette this weekend. It didn't get put in. She's going to try to get it in this Friday.
I think Matt's gonna post something on the two town Facebook things.
And you're gonna make some signs to go up at the entryways, so that they can see it.
Yes.
I can post it on the website as well.
That'll be good. Thank you.
And one other thing I had that we need to discuss. It could be old business, it could be new business in either way, but I'm questioning the septic system for both this building and the fire department, highway department, and police department. I cannot exactly remember when the last time that they were pumped, which is probably three years now. And they do need to be done every year, and we haven't been keeping up with that, so I would like to.
Two years.
It's at least two years.
Yeah, no, because you had the plugged line, because Mike Russ was at my house when you called.
Right, 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 right.
And then you, you had it pumped, and then I think Adrian Ayers' company came out and.
Yeah, they've been out, they've been out twice.
Yeah.
But it wasn't so bad this time. The first time that Adrian and his company had to come out several years ago was somewhere around 2012. And it was really plugged up. Then we don't want to get it back into that.
So it would have been 2022.
Yeah.
The, that it came.
So I would suggest that what they used to do prior to us being on the board, that they had an agreement with Rutland's annotation, of course, that's no longer in existence, but if we could come up with one agreement with another company similarly, that they put it on their calendar and they come every week, every year. And that way, we don't have to be calling them and asking, are you coming or whatever? They will have it, they will schedule us in and keep it going.
That's a good idea.
The last times that it has been fixed or pumped was done by Aunt Sun.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So that would be a company I wouldn't mind, you know, looking into, see if they would be willing to set up for us. Or if we need to take bids or anything from any others.
Just need quotes.
Some quotes.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think you're looking at roughly, well, depending on what fuel's gone up, but 400 to 500 for a standard 1,500 gallon tank.
I don't even, do we have a 1,500 gallon tank out here? I don't know what we have out here.
That tank, I think, is newer. Why I say newer, post elementary school here, Billy Payne, when he was on the board, I think they changed the tank.
Okay.
But that predates, so it's 30 plus years old.
Yep. But we just don't want anything to happen to it because we really don't want to have to put in a whole new septic design or anything like that because we do not have enough space.
Don't have enough money either.
It's true, but we would have to be borrowing or asking Mr. Black for some property out back to actually have a leach field. So we want to make sure we take very good care of the septic design, so I will check with the Aunt Sun.
Who's been doing the municipal building? Has Kevin been?
Dane, I
Been on that?
I contacted the municipal building, I contacted the police department, and nobody could remember when it was ever done. I'm sure it was, or it had to have been, but I'm not sure it was on a list to check. So I would like to actually put it down that they would do all three buildings.
All three buildings were done at the same time when I, which is going back a ways.
But that's, that's quite a ways, yeah.
Yeah.
Because the company you had was Rutland.
Right.
Which no longer, of course, exists, so.
But the, the medicine building was done
Yes.
That same time they did all three buildings.
But since then, I'm not sure that they have because Fire Chief says he's never seen it been done, and I didn't get a response from Kevin, but Police Department said the last time they did it, and he couldn't remember exactly, they put a pipe in incorrectly and then had to come back and fix it, and that was the last time he remembers that being done. So I would just like to have it put on a schedule that it's going to happen every year and everybody, hopefully, be safe then, and we won't have to put in any more expense.
I think there's a tank too up there for a gray water tank.
I believe there is.
For the, the drains and the floors. They go to a drain, I don't, I don't remember how many gallons it was, but it was a big, big tank.
But I can check on that when I'm up there.
Because they should pump that too at the same time, you know.
They, they may very well know what's up there because they have been up there at least once, I'm sure. If they've been here twice, they've been up there at least once sometime. Okay, I will check on that. We'll make sure that that gets done. Anything else for old business, new business? You're all set? This is the next one, okay. Correspondence, Town Clerk resignation. Dear Board of Selectmen, after much consideration, I have decided to leave the position of interim town clerk. May 31st, 2024. I have enjoyed serving the town and working with the selectmen. Sincerely, Edna Holloway. Thank you. Make note of that, and have we sent out an ad for the?
Yeah, it's gonna be coming out on MMA and all that.
Okay, hopefully we'll hear from somebody that is capable and understands the work that it requires, especially at voting time. It's really a very heavy duty thing to do.
So we have the assistant town clerk for town meeting Monday night. That's what I was just gonna ask.
Can we chat to her?
Nothing for her to do other than record the votes.
But, because really, that's all, she doesn't write minutes and like that.
Well, she doesn't. We'd have to appoint somebody, or have the moderator appoint somebody at the beginning of the meeting. at the beginning of the meeting to do that.
Yes, that's correct, because you, yeah, remember when she did it last time, she had to get appointed.
Yes, they do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. Moderator, that might be something you will have to take care of then, the night of the election.
It, it can be anybody.
Right.
Yes, it can be.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, you want to have somebody capable of keeping them better, but.
Yeah.
Susan Turnbull, looks like she could do it. Do you have any finance committee, uh, for your appointments Monday night?
I will give them.
Yeah, they should be sung.
Okay.
Hope so. Hope there's at least three.
Yeah.
If not four or five. I don't know about three.
Well, it shouldn't be three because the terms are stagnant, so it won't be reappointing everybody.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, good. Anything else for discussion?
I got nothing.
Nothing?
Right now.
Done?
Can you think of anything?
No?
No.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. At, oh, promptly, 6:30. That was, yours says 6:30?